And we are live, Mr. Heed.
Before I call this meeting of the monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees for November 19, 2020, I want to read a declaration by our governor. On March 13, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott issued a declaration of emergency as a result of the COVID-19 virus outbreak. Subsequently, on March 16, 2020, pursuant to the authority granted in the declaration, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended the application of certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, in order to permit telephonic open meetings. This was an effort to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus by avoiding large group meetings while still ensuring continued governmental operations and preserving transparency in the decision-making process. Pursuant to this authority, Tarrant County College District gave notice of its intent to conduct today's Board of Trustees' meeting as a telephonic and video conference open meeting. Two trustees will participate in person for this meeting, myself, Conrad Heed, and Mr. Kenneth Barr. Mr. Bill Greenhill, Ms. Teresa Ayala, Dr. Michael Evans, Dr. Gwendlin Morrison, and Dr. Diane Patrick will participate via video conference or telephonically. I'll now call to order the November 19 monthly meeting for the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College. I don't believe we have any public comment. I would take a personal opportunity to make a statement. We have in the past, Dr. Morrison especially and others, have thanked our students, our faculty, our staff, and everyone for their perseverance and working through the COVID experience, and all that was well justified. But I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Directors, the Board of Trustees. We have an excellent board. We're engaged, we're intelligent, responsible. We've been elected to serve TCC. We are responsible for everything that happens at TCC, and I know that all of us want nothing but the best for our students, our faculty, and the institution, while at the same time being responsible to our constituents and being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. I know that all of us suffer some of the same problems and situations that the rest of the college has, medical problems of ourselves and part of our family, being extremely busy, et cetera, et cetera. And I just want the board to know that I am very proud to serve on this board with the rest of our fellow trustees. Thank you. Mr. Barr, you have an introduction, I believe.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a special guest this evening, and her name is Chelsea Foran, and she is a graduate of TCC's nursing program. She currently works at JPS Hospital as a nurse here in Fort Worth, and she is also in the Master of Nursing Administration Program at Texas Tech University. And one of the assignments she had for one of her nursing administration classes was to attend a board meeting, and she chose the TCC board for that purpose. And I've had a chance to visit with her and talk a little bit about our board and what goes on here. She, Chelsea, would you stand up so everybody can recognize you? Thank you for being here, and thank you for the services you're delivering to people in Tarrant County at JPS every day. We appreciate it and glad you're here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Item three on agenda is Board Business Items and Announcements. First of all, 3A is approval of the work session meeting minutes of October 8, 2020. Are there any comments, suggestions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So move.
Motion to approve by Mr. Barr and somebody second it.
Michael Evans.
Michael Evans, Dr. Evans, second it. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item B is approval of the Board of Trustee meeting minutes of October 15, 2020. Any comments, suggestions on that?
Move approval.
A move approval by Mr. Barr, second by Dr. Patrick. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item 3B, approval of the special meeting minutes of October 21, 2020. Are there any comments, suggestions?
So move.
Motion for approval by Dr. Evans, a second, by?
Second.
Mr. Barr, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item D, trustee activities. Dr. Morrison, I know you have something.
Thank you so much. First of all, thank you for those wonderful remarks that you made. Good evening to everyone. I'm so happy to be here today and glad that we're all trying to stay safe, wear our masks, and be very responsible as we are out and about in the community if necessary. I'm actually trying to limit myself, but thank you so much. I want to bring them, you know, every time I talk about TCC employees, I have to say what great employees we have, beginning with our chancellor. And I'm always excited to say that because every which way I turn, I see outstanding accomplishments and recognitions made of our employees and their work, not only with recognition coming from within the college, but from recognition coming outside the college as well. And so today, I just want to share two things, and these are both dear and near and dear to my heart. Many of you know that I am an educator, a classroom certified classroom teacher, in fact certified through the superintendency level. So it really gives me great pleasure to recognize our Associate of Arts in Teaching Program, which was recently recognized by the U.S. Department of Education College Scorecard as one of ranked number five in the top 24 Associate in Teaching Degree Programs in the United States. I think that is just totally awesome. You can Google it to read about it, but let me tell you, I did some checking, and I was told that currently we have 446 students enrolled in this program across the college this semester. Now, one of the jobs that I did that I actually got paid for was certifying teachers, running a program that certified teachers, and we know that there's a great need for dedicated teachers. So thanks, TCC. Thanks for Dr. Sharia Taylor, who all of you know from her having attended board meetings when she was chair of the joint CCC, JCC, and just thank all the staff who work in the program, and thank you, Chancellor, for your support of this very strong program and for continuing it. I think it's doing a great service. The second shout-out I want to give is to our dedicated Publications Department, and I know I'm not giving the right name for that, but they won, count with me, seven, eight, nine awards. And I'm just going to say, I was surprised and excited to know that, as you see on the screen, one of the, I invited you last year to the I Am a Man exhibit, which was set up at the Trinity River Campus, but I was totally blown away when I walked into the exhibit room. I really thought I was at the Smithsonian. Well, that display, that exhibition actually was nationally recognized, and I have to thank the people on that one. The art director was Keely Edwards, the designer, and the illustrator was Arturo Martinez. But across that whole department, there were nine different awards. They did fabulous work, and that one on adjusted lenses, Imagine in Blackness, was a fantastic exhibit. You couldn't come to Trinity River Campus last February unless you were exposed to that. So I say all of that to say, I'm just grateful for the investment that we make in our employees, and I am grateful for the great work that they do and the great light that they share, TCC, with the world. So thank you all for your work at all levels. I appreciate you and just so excited to be a part of such a talented and dedicated group of people. And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Well said. Dr. Patrick?
Excuse me. He will never say it, but I think our Vice Chancellor, Reginald Gates, has a little something to do with some of those people. And so thanks, Reg, for all the work you do. You know, we think you only work for us, but thank you for all of your broad responsibilities. Thank you.
Is there anything else, Dr. Morrison?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Patrick?
I don't have a report tonight.
Dr. Michael Evans?
Thank you, Mr. President, and to my fellow board members. I think the only thing that I have to report is the fact that I find myself in runoff. I was a top vote getter for the mayoral candidacy in Mansfield. Led my opponents by about 26, 2,700 votes. But now it's round two, and we began early voting on Monday, and the actual election day is December the 8th. And of course, I appreciate the support that I've received from the board and also the advice that has been given to me. And I appreciate you all, and I want you all to know that. It's been one of the finest boards, I think, that I've ever been part of, and I appreciate the work and the due diligence that takes place at Tarrant County College. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. We have mixed feelings. We know that if you are elected, that Mansfield is going to have a tremendous mayor, but that will mean that you'll have to leave our board, and we regret that tremendously. We appreciate all your service and all your good advice and counsel.
Appreciate you, sir.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
May I just say that indeed it has been a pleasure serving alongside Dr. Evans. He has been a strong voice here on the board for the students, the faculty, and the staff, and I join you in extending my best wishes to him for his campaign, and we appreciate what you've done here, and we're looking forward to you doing great things in the mayorship of Mansfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Greenhill, and he's one of the gentlemen I've been, I talked about in my message. He had not one but two medical procedures this morning, and I know he's not feeling too well. I hope--
I'm all, now, can you see me?
He's doing well. Are you doing okay?
I'm here, I'm okay.
Okay. Any--
I'm not going to report on my procedure. I'm not going to report on my procedure. My brain is a little fluffy right now. Take it from me later on the very exciting report I'm going to give next.
Thank you. Mr. Barr? Okay. Ms. Teresa Ayala? She is not with us yet.
No, she's not with us. I'm giving the report for her.
Yeah. She's been in another meeting. She's been in several meetings, I think, today, and that's what I'm referred to in my opening remarks, that we're all very, very busy, but we continue to serve TCC as best we can. Mr. Barr, Mr. Barr, Mr. Barr, I've already called on you. I have a comment. I would like, well, last Saturday, a couple Saturdays ago, we had some interviews for, with five Global Grant Scholar candidates for a Rody Foundation $40,000 grant to attend a college outside the United States in his or her field. This is a post-baccalaurate program, and we've had a couple TCC graduates get approved for that, and we hope to see some more. But I'd like to thank, in honor of the chancellor, for allowing us to hold this meeting on our campus, but Reginald Gates for doing all the organization, putting this together, you and your staff. And I want to thank Dr. Shawn Madison for his warm hospitality, the technical staff, Kevin Bruce, et cetera, et cetera, did an outstanding job. We had three of those candidates online Zoom meeting, and it went flawlessly. It was a very good session. I want to thank also Dr. Elva LeBlanc, Dr. Serena Blankenbaker, Dr. Kenya Ayers-Palmore, and Dr. Peter Jordan, who joined us, he's in town, for helping us with that interview. It was very difficult. We had five strong, good candidates. We actually selected three of them to receive these scholarships. So I want to thank the college for allowing us to do that on campus and for the staff to be part of that. We'll now move on to the Finance and Audit Committee report, and since Ms. Teresa Ayala is still in her meeting, Mr. Bill Greenhill, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on October the 28th to deliberate and to listen to the internal audit department report. Trustee Ayala, the chair of the board, and I, she chaired the board, and I was present. Trustee Evans was not present. The audit materials ought to be, the audit report materials shouldn't be in your package, so I'm not going to discuss them in great detail, but I'm going to recommend that the report, which is required by law--
You recommend approval?
The audit plan for this year, which was for background--
Well, you want to go ahead and approve it?
Yes. Recommendation for approval by the Audit and Finance Committee, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Any opposed? Motion carries. The Finance and Audit Committee report is accepted. Item four, consideration approval of the consent agenda. And I'd like to say that to our audience that our board met in a work session a week ago, and we considered all these items, not only on the consent agenda, but the other approval items, and had many good debates about them and asked all the questions we need to ask. And so if we go through these kind of quickly, it's because we've already discussed them. If anyone, any board member would like to pull any of these items off the agenda, they can do so now? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
A motion by--
Diane Patrick.
And a second, by?
Michael Evans, second.
Michael Evans, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Item five, consideration approval of individual action items. Of A is to consideration approval of the purchase of a five-year agreement for infrastructure campus learning management system, parentheses, LMS, in the amount of $3,969,058.12, Mr. Pacheco.
Yes, this is for the new LMS system that we selected over the summer through an RFP for a five-year contract. This is for the infrastructure campus learning-- This is, uh, for the infrastructure canvas learning management system. Welcome. Any questions?
Any questions? Comments? Motion?
I move to approve, Michael Evans.
Uh, motion to approve by Dr. Evans, a second by Mr. Barr. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five B, consideration approval of contract with Beck Architecture LLC for Phase One Research and Discovery for Way Finding and Signage Program Services, district-wide, in the amount of $164,080.80, Ms. Ellenese.
Good evening. Uh, this is a project that I think we're all excited about. It's the first phase of planning for better wayfinding, building nomenclature, and how that's shared both physically on our campuses as well as electronically through different applications. So we're very excited to kick this project off.
Question? Comments? Motion?
Move approval.
Move approval by Mr. Barr, a second. By?
Glenn Morrison.
Dr. Morrison. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you. The Chancellor has asked to make a presentation before we can sit, uh, can continue with these next items. So, Mr. Chancellor?
Thank you, Mr. Heed. As I had, uh, mentioned at the work session last week, we'd like to provide, uh, ongoing, um, a context to some of the items that require perhaps a little bit more discussion and explanation. So I want to take more of that opportunity, uh, this evening to meet, to provide some context to the agenda items that we plan to present, particularly the next three in nature. So in tonight in particular, I want to speak more globally to some of the concerns we've heard trustees, uh, both during and after our, our most recent meetings. In the past several months, um, there have been agenda items that have brought forward, been brought forward related to advancing the work of the bond projects and questions have been posed, which have caused us to pause and reflect and reexamine. Because the public has entrusted us with a care and prudence to spend an $825 million bond proposition to advance the mission of the college. On its behalf, the pause that we have taken and time to reexamine has been of quite great value. We share across the college a collective desire to make sure that our past and future recommendations are rooted in the best possible advice and most sound decision-making. As educators and community servants, we are invested in making thoroughly researched and well-informed decisions that will benefit those we are called to serve. Even further, it is our responsibility to model the same kind of decision-making we expect our students to employ in their life choices and our day-to-day leadership and management of the college as well. We are grateful to the board for challenging us to make sure these marks have been met. To that end, tonight, the team will share with you that the college has invested in cultivating three types of information related to the planning and process in the last four years to the, to the, to the items that you have before you tonight. First, information on the raw space needs of the college. Specifically, that means we spent time taking an inventory of our spaces and physical program elements. We use this information to determine the future footprint of our spaces, and this happened in various venues. For example, to plan for the transformation of our libraries into Learning Commons, we had to determine what space needs would be required as we transform from a space that functions just to store books to a space also that houses multiple aspects of student learning support, such as supplemental instruction, tutoring, maker spaces, not just books. Second, we also gathered information on the technical specifications of these physical program elements. Specifically, we were deliberate about talking about, talking, or taking time to understand and describe all the systems associated with these raw spaces and their technical performance criteria necessary to deliver on those spaces. As an example, in the transition to Learning Commons, technical specifications had to be determined and planned for. Things like expanded Wi-Fi and media capacity and other types of technology was needed to be assessed. And lastly, we gathered information on the functional attributes and requirements of these spaces, meaning that we have invested a significant amount of time in making sure that the functional aspects of our spaces are outlined and documented. These spaces have to be staffed and used in order to serve students. And we have done extensive work to determine those functional requirements for all of those spaces. The design professionals have been provided this information. And since engaging the architects and designers, we have lived hand in hand with them to make sure that they are acculturated to every aspect of this information. And what the team will show you tonight is how the information has resulted in design proposals and plans that meet the long-term durability requirements of our physical program. And we also certainly look forward to answering any of your questions. So I'd ask Susan if you would take it from here, please.
Yeah. So, um, you received a, a response to the request for a, a one-pager, if you will, of instructions that were provided to the design team. And we, we didn't do so well at condensing it to one page, it's several pages, but it, it does reflect the, the collaboration that's been happening over a number of years that accompanied any, any instructions that we provided to them. So what I'd like to do is walk you through a little bit of a brief history of that so that, um, the, the group has the refreshed memory of, of some of those activities that have been happening since 2016. We'll talk to you about the deliverables that we plan to, um, deliver going forward based on the feedback that we've received from this group. And then we'll visit a little bit about the specific agenda items that you have before you this evening. So I'm not sure where the slides are. Let's see. Oh, so, um, the design sort of integrated, we, I, I described them as phases, but they're really more integrated than that. They're not linear in nature. They're sort of overlapping and iterative in a lot of ways. And so, of course, we have the district-wide visioning and needs assessment that happened that, that resulted in a lot of information that will be applicable to all of the projects, not just Northwest. Then we have the Northwest Technical Assessments, um, that, uh, that helped us to really study and understand the needs at that campus. And then there's an ongoing effort with the active incorporation of the 3G, eight, three G eight P work into the actual designs. So I'm going to walk you through it at a very high level. So back starting in, in 2016, um, the first block notes that there were a series of, um, college-wide visioning charrettes where leadership, um, the, uh, students, faculty, and so on, participated in, in an effort to start developing what would become the vision for the college. Then, starting in 2018, was when it evolved into, um, the eight principles work of really fleshing out what those eight principles, uh, would come to be and how to define them and what their, their, uh, their work plans would be moving forward. And then in 2019, that bottom box, I'm sorry, I'm not showing you the right slide. That bottom box, um, shows you when, when H and G joined, um, in 2019. And they followed up with some empathy diagramming that resulted in the, um, some of the design drivers that, that informed the project. And so, as you're well aware, we ended up getting the, the eight principles out of that process. And then going forward, this is the, the information that we shared with you more recently that are the design drivers that, that resulted from that initial work, um, that was, uh, done by Huckabee and Gensler. So, related to the technical overview, you can see that throughout, um, there's, there's been design, uh, standards, uh, and, uh, for the college that have been published for many years and they've continued to evolve. Why I'm hitting that, keep hitting a button, um, that have continued to evolve over time. They're updated, uh, probably annually and they reflect code changes, technical specifications for equipment and materials that are used, um, and so on. And, uh, they are informative to all, a lot of our partners that do capital projects for us and so on. And so those have been sort of available throughout the duration of this. Separately, in 2019, H and G and other consultants were involved in doing a deep dive building assessment of each camp, um, of each building at Northwest. And the purpose of that was to understand which buildings were salvageable, which buildings weren't, um, what their functional, um, life expectancy was versus their physical life expectancy and so on. And so there was some detailed, uh, information in that report. That led to a straw man architectural design as well, when we had a consultant help us really do, uh, assessment of the utilization of classrooms. How full were they? Were we using really big classrooms with really small groups? Were they being scheduled to their maximum? What does growth look like over time and so on? And that's how they came up with what the Chancellor referred to as the square footage requirements to meet the needs now and into the future, assuming that we would add significant efficiency to the way the buildings were laid out. That resulted in a couple of, uh, campus site plan, uh, options that, that emerged and, uh, they were reflective of, of those square footages, but it started to give us some sense about how they would be positioned on the campuses, on the campus. And then, uh, around that same time, we also engaged the construction manager because they would be really critical to, uh, helping select materials and, and systems and so on, and pricing along the way as we, as we kept our eye on making sure that we could come in under budget. Um, one of the other things that you were provided is a link to the planning document that was put together that sort of summarizes that, um, from well before Huckabee got here. Um, it was sort of their research to make sure that they understood the history before they arrived and then, and then tracked some of this process as well. So the only instructions, if you will, um, that we provided to the architectural team upon their arrival, um, everything else, as I've noted, has been collaborative, was that we made sure that there was an awareness of the TCC design standards. It really is a baseline and, uh, was intended to, to guide their thinking, but certainly there was always the opportunity to talk to us about any variances that they thought would make sense based on their experience, um, in this industry. We also had a conversation about, um, what level of materials and finishes would be used in the building. So to simplify it, probably for me more than anything, is we talked about, um, good, better, and best. What's our baseline? And, um, we, we essentially said for, for pricing and for our initial planning and for us figuring out how we're doing compared to the budget, we really want to be at that better level, um, except in, in certain circumstances that they would recommend, uh, some deviation from that for the purpose of making sure that we were planning for long-term durability of the facilities, but also, um, building, uh, something that was reasonable for a public institution. Those, the, the fine tuning of those decisions is occurring on a bi-weekly basis as we continue to receive, um, feedback on, on how they would finish out the spaces. And then finally, we had a discussion about the resiliency standards. And we talked about this at the sustainability workshop, that, um, the initial baseline guidance that we decided that we would premise, um, the designs on, uh, was at the silver level. And part of that was because it, it, silver is achievable within the bounds of the things that are within the control of the college. So one of the things that we talked about on resiliency standards is a lot of times it involves things that, that we can't necessarily control. Site selection, um, transit accessibility, um, bike trails, um, you know, things like that. So, um, it, it was appropriate for us to choose at, at that level as our baseline and then rely on the, the experts to help us understand where there are areas that they felt like we ought to be working towards, um, better or different building efficiency. But again, this was sort of putting together a framework so we could start to understand, um, what the costs were, what we were putting together on a, on a project of this scale. So then getting to the third element of, of the design, um, uh, process is the active incorporation. And so we've got regular, ongoing meetings testing the, um, testing the, um, the work that we're doing and the designs that they're coming up with against what the 3G eight P principles and criteria were. Are we getting it right with what they had in mind? Are we serving the students in the way that they'd intended? Are the adjacencies working, um, for what will make sense? And so there, there have been many, many meetings every week where they're going back and, and testing as the design evolves to go back and, and have those conversations with them. The heavy lifting has really been about receiving and interpreting the input from the various panels who've been working on all of this and the work teams, and then translating that back to them in the design that's emerged. So, um, what I feel like we've heard from the board as we, as we try to, uh, meet the needs, I mean, because I think we're, we're actively interested in making sure that we provide you information that you find helpful, uh, to this process, is that, um, the expectation clearly is to have some public transparency. And, um, as we talked about last week, I believe, um, we actually are about to, uh, be in a position to be able to launch a, a dashboard that keeps track of, uh, project progress as well as budget, um, and so on. We're going to, at the December work session, be able to preview that for you. That's one of Jacob's responsibilities, is to build that and maintain that for us over time. Um, and the intent is to provide information to you all to keep your pulse on it, the community. It'll also have information for contractors and, uh, partners in the community that may be seeking opportunities to get some of the business associated with it. So, um, our, our goal is to publish that publicly in January, depending on your feedback in December on the content of that. Um, the other thing we've talked about pretty extensively is the analysis of the MWBE and hub results. Um, this board has already done the work of revising the plan and helping us, um, adopt metrics that, uh, that, that allow us to look at a little bit more granular level. We will be including in the quarterly, um, updates and coming back to you in February with, uh, the first iteration of that in the new format. Um, and then we'll also be including information on the bond program website for vendors to, um, access information, not only about the projects, but also where, where MWBEs can look for assistance with certifications and that kind of thing. Um, the review of the design drivers and, and planning documents. So this is one that we, we actually provided to you guys after the fact, and that was a miss based on, uh, what we're hearing from you. For Northwest, we provided a lot of that information, starting at the, the work session that we had in October and, um, talked about it, and, and just recently distributed that broad planning document that I referenced. What our suggestion is, and the deliverable would be going forward is for the Southeast, is that evolves and we get, um, while the design drivers will likely be similar to what they are for Northwest, um, based on that more global thought process, but that planning document will be, um, uh, distributed and shared and, uh, with, and presented to the board, uh, when it's, when it's prepared. And so we're at a point now with the, the design of that facility that that's very doable. Um, the sustainability plan is another thing that we talked about at the workshop last week, that that's a high-level policy that we, um, we know that the board is interested in. We're actively drafting that based on the work that we'd already done to make sure that we've captured, um, the sustainability, uh, activities that the college already does. And then also intend to present to you the metrics that make sense. We'll cover that in February and get your feedback so that we can, uh, make sure that that reflects, uh, what, uh, what the objectives of the, of the board are. And then finally, uh, well, not finally, next to last, um, one of the things that, um, I've had a, a couple of lightbulb moments, so to speak, uh, recently is, is making sure that we're really capturing, um, what smart building elements are and getting a comfort level with the board. There's, there's a lot of smart building elements that already, um, already incorporated into the current design. I don't think that we've been packaging it quite that way for a discussion with the board that's, that's been helpful. And so that's our, our goal to do that. Um, and also to define what that means, because it doesn't mean the same thing to, to everybody. And so, um, one of the things that, uh, we'll do is, is Jacob's is, is helping take the lead in, in that. And I'm going to, um, uh, ask somebody from there to come up and talk to you in a minute as, as we get into some of the, the other topics. But, um, we would like to have that technology workshop that we promised you for February. That was sort of the third rail of, of some of the policy areas that we have, but in, in February have a really good discussion about what smart building technology means, how it'll be reflected in our buildings and, and whether that sufficiently meets the, the needs and, and intent of, of the board. And then finally, um, we would like to do a better job of including you in the evaluation of site plan options. So one of the things that, um, occurred with Northwest is, of course, we started narrowing down, um, and, and the large planning document, you probably saw some of that, what site, uh, site plans were possible. And then we started talking a lot about the terrain of the, um, of the campus. And then we also started talking about scheduling and how you compress the schedule in such a way to be able to deliver. And that affected when you could tear building down, buildings down and take them out of service and when you could start new buildings. And all of those decisions affected the site plan. And so we, we looked at those technical things and, and, and drew a conclusion and presented that to you. However, with Southeast, we are hearing loud and clear that you'd like us to bring the options that are under consideration back to you sooner so that you have the opportunity to take a look at them and hear the reasoning and the recommendation from staff around that. Plenty of time to do that, obviously, with the Southeast campus. So, um, one, one topic that, uh, that lingers is, is the discussion that we've been having about power over Ethernet lighting systems. And, um, one of, what I'd like to clarify a little bit is that, a- as you know, the team has not recommended this as the method for construction at this point. And I think one of the, the challenges that we've had is, is making sure that we're all talking about the same thing. So POE is an established technology for a variety of uses, some of which are here at TCC, where, uh, and will be in, in our buildings that we build. POE is much less established for comprehensive, uh, lighting systems. And I'm going to ask Erin in just a moment to come up and talk to you a little bit more about. in just a moment to come up and talk to you a little bit more about why that means that we are not recommending a PoE lighting system. Our experience so far is that the current LED with N Light controls is delivering similar energy efficiency and occupancy daylight sensing and so on with less complexity and uncertainty for the lighting system itself. Other alternatives are available to create some of the other smart building elements if further data collecting beyond what we can do with the N Light system are deemed appropriate. What we had recommended to you previously was a pilot at the South Campus, which would be an opportunity for us to evaluate a larger scale or a project and really understand what it takes to implement, design, and maintain, and how those partnerships would work, and then consider whether there are any larger-scale adoption opportunities that make some sense. But what I'd like to do, because I think it was very helpful to me, and I think it'll be helpful to the board as well, is to invite Aaron Sarfati up with Jacob's. He's been on the team since the very first proposal, and so I'll turn it over to him to talk to you a little bit more about the context of PoE lighting systems.
Thank you, Susan. Good evening, Mr. President, Chancellor, members of the board. My name is Aaron Sarfati. I am a member of the Jacob's Project Management Team. I've been involved since the very beginning. This is the first time you're seeing me here, but rest assured that I've been involved and I've watched every one of the board meetings and intimately knowledgeable of the conversations that have taken place. In addition to the role that I serve on the team from a controls and dashboarding perspective, which we hope to present at the next board meeting, I also serve within the Jacob's organization as our liaison with our solutions and technology group focused on innovation. And that's really technology in the built environment, everything from smart buildings, smart cities. So while I'm not necessarily the expert in all of these technologies, I am, and you have access to through me, liaising with those within the Jacob's organization that are experts in these technologies. What I've done in the past weeks and have accelerated over the last few days, including up to just a few minutes right before this meeting, has been trying to deep dive with as many experts throughout the country as I can. I've spoken with our experts in Texas, in Florida, in St. Louis, I think in Iowa, across the country, where we've been doing these types of implementations so that I could help clarify why the recommendation regarding PoE lighting is and where we can take things to the future. So let me begin just with PoE lighting. Well, let me begin with PoE as a system as a whole. PoE, power over ethernet, is a subset of a distributed low-voltage power supply. We've been doing PoE deployments for a long, long time. You can see even in this room that we're sitting in, there are PoE devices, everything that's got one of these blue cables that doesn't have a power cable attached to it. It's receiving power over an ethernet cable. It's a very sophisticated technology, and from a, as future-proof as you can get using PoE devices and PoE infrastructure, gives you the ability to make sure that your building over the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years can adapt to whatever those new operational technology items come from, smart sensors to smart devices to smart whatever. PoE lighting is one component of that larger PoE discussion, and that's bringing really the power directly to those light fixtures versus a traditional method. What we're seeing is that those PoE devices certainly have an energy efficiency benefit versus a traditional fluorescent system. But that's not what we're comparing here at the TCC project. What the architects have done in collaboration with the TCC design guidelines is focused on an LED system, which is already by default, a low voltage, low energy use, energy efficient, not low voltage, energy efficient system to achieving those. And one of the specific questions that I really pressed on our experts was, when you're comparing the type of system the TCC is already specifying with N Light controlling versus a PoE-type system, where is your energy efficiency gap? And I'll be honest with you, what I've heard is kind of a split decision. Some say, well, there's maybe a tangible difference. Some say there's not really a tangible difference, and there are outweighing benefits. Ultimately, what is ending up happening with PoE lighting systems is it's a relatively new system that's limited to a few manufacturers. This was one piece that I got yesterday night from one of our experts in St. Louis, and she says, "The major lighting manufacturers are not spending their R&amp;D money on PoE light fixtures. They don't see that necessarily as the future of where their lighting products are going." There are some, but the problem is if we change our system to that type of system, we're going to be limiting the amount, the competitiveness of the environment in which we can purchase those fixtures, plus to repair and replace them is a question mark. I also asked very specifically, I said, "Say PoE lighting is the future, and we miss out on this boat here in this case, what are we missing out in terms of the future?" And the answer is really very little, because at the end of the day, we still have a sophisticated control system from an established vendor, and there are still myriad additional benefits through other smart building control systems that we can consider separate and apart from PoE lighting as a specific thing. So what I'm here to say, and what we've been working on with the team, is, and Susan alluded to it earlier, in terms of getting better definition of what TCC as an organization expects a smart building to look like, and to work and bring that innovation that I can help bring to the table, to say, okay, how can we make the smartest building that is appropriate for TCC possible? At this point, and I think there's another slide in terms of the PoE lighting component itself, we are at a point where if we were to say we have to go that route for whatever reasons, there are definitely negative impacts in terms of time delays, in terms of possible cost escalations, likely cost escalations, likely additional services costs that likely outweigh the potential benefit. I think if we were at a position where we had more proofs, that's the other thing. I've been trying to research where PoE lighting implementations have been successful, and we just have a handful. There's just not a lot of research and a lot of available data to overwhelmingly support that that is where we should go. It may be, I'm not standing here and saying that it's not the future, but the marginal benefits that it may provide are outweighed by the risks and question marks associated with that technology, coupled with the tangible negative impacts to the current project at Northwest Campus. So we'll still deliver similar energy efficiency, we'll still deliver high-tech smarts within that parameters that we'll discuss later. It's just this one subset likely doesn't provide that value at this time. I've also spoken with several other innovative firms that are out there that are doing PoE nodes, one of them, I won't mention them necessarily by name, but we've received input and we reached out to all of them, and they're working with Microsoft and Pfizer and those things. Those are PoE general implementations, not just specifically PoE lighting, and they do merit more research and more discussion, and we're excited to facilitate those types of discussions moving forward.
Questions, discussion?
So before we get, I turn it back over to you, Mr. Heed, I do want to emphasize that the college certainly depends on the board to guide us towards the best interests and certainly of the citizens of Tarrant County and how they have entrusted us. Likewise, we have an obligation to bring forward recommendations that will enable us to do a few things. Specifically, deliver a high-quality program on time and on budget, ensure the results will serve the students and the broader community for 50 to 100 years. Third, be sure, or be good stewards of taxpayer dollars by managing scope and risk by leveraging guidance and from the experts that we work with. And then finally, and this really came from the survey that we asked you a month or so ago, probably two months ago, would be to employ proven technologies, but be forward-thinking in adopting newer industry standards when the benefits are clear. And that came, that guidance really came from the survey question in which the conclusion or the response, the majority of response was that we move cautiously comfortable in that arena related to adopting of new technologies. So what we have presented to you today is what we know, based on the advice of our experts, to be the best, most thoroughly researched and well-substantiated recommendations. We understand that the board's interest in engaging in the development of the bond projects is a high priority, and as we've mentioned before, we greatly appreciate that. And you certainly have, as Susan indicated, moving forward, my commitment that from this juncture forward, we will engage the board and inform the board differently into its desire in a timely manner. So, Mr. Heed, I'll turn it over to you, and for 5C, which Susan will present.
Yeah, 5C is consideration approval of a contract with Farms Work, Inc. for commissioning services for the redevelopment of Northwest Campus in an amount not to exceed $700,000.
Michael Evans, so moved.
Would you like to make a presentation?
Oh, my bad. I'm sorry. That's how we just had it.
That's okay. I'll be brief. Actually, that's okay. This is just authorization up to $700,000 for the commissioning services. It'll be through the duration of the selection and installation of HVAC equipment in the facilities.
Questions, discussion? We'll entertain a motion.
Second. Yes, all of that. By Michael Evans.
Motion by Dr. Evans, second by?
Green Hill, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 5C, excuse me, 5D, consideration approval of services with Huckabee, Inc. for architectural services for the redevelopment of Northwest Campus in an amount not to exceed $9,511,471. Ms. Allenese.
Yes, this is the final in a series of design contracts with Huckabee. And one clarification I want to offer is the total amount that will be paid to Huckabee is 27.1 million. That's the culmination of all of those contracts together. The handout that we had that had the itemization of all prior board actions actually didn't reflect when we split and only approved a portion of it in October, and so the total amount is $27 million.
Questions, discussion?
So moved.
Mr. Bar?
So moved.
Mr. Heed, I want to make a motion.
I need a second or not? For discussion purposes only.
We're having discussion.
No, but you make a motion and second it, and then you discuss. It's on the floor at that time.
I'm trying to make a motion. I move to delay consideration and approval of item 5D, 5E, and 5F on today's agenda until the December board meeting, with the understanding that staff will gather information and provide a briefing to the board on these items during the December working session.
Point of order, I made a motion and it was seconded. That should be an amended motion.
We have a motion and a second.
With all due respect, I think you had called on me, Mr. Heed, before anybody.
I did call on Mr. Bar first.
Okay. I amend, I'd like to make an amended motion that we approve it. Is there a second to that? Then that's okay. Okay?
Mr. Bar? Mr. Bar?
Do you want to read items 5E and F? Or do you want to take these individually?
Well, point of order, I would like to second Mr. Green Hill's amended motion. And for purposes of discussion.
I understand, but I recognize Mr. Bar first.
Okay.
And I think he has right to make a motion, and we can vote it up or down, whatever.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe Mr. Bar made a motion and it was seconded. Is it not appropriate for Mr. Green Hill to make an amended motion?
I can do that.
And if he made that amended motion, we have to, I believe Roberts Rules of Order says you deal with the amended motion first and then deal with the main motion.
Right. Carol?
We have, Carol?
Mr. Green Hill is correct. Under Roberts Rules of Orders, you deal with the amended motion first.
What was your amended motion, Mr. Green Hill?
My amended motion is that we approve it.
Okay.
Not delay it. We approve the Huckabee contract for $9,511,041, whatever it is.
What is your amended motion, or was that?
My amended motion is that we approve the services contract with Huckabee and not delay it. And it's seconded by Ms. Morris.
Mr. Bar made the first motion. Mr. Green Hill's making a second, a mandatory motion or a supplemental motion, and that will be considered first.
The amended motion considered first?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So are we ready for discussion?
Yes, go ahead.
So my question is, I want to know from staff, what additional information would you bring to us that would inform our decision that you haven't already presented? That's the first question. The second being, what are the delays that we'll encounter by moving this forward and not approving it?
So I think that we would need to seek clarity from the board of what additional information is needed at this point, because we've presented the information as we know it at this point.
Likewise, the understanding what the amount of delay or time of delay or substantive nature of the delay, then I'd be able to respond to the consequences. I can do that in a general nature related to the time in terms of, you know, if you could eat into another six months of another cycle of students that in fact won't be served very well. It's depending upon what the delay is in terms of time and what's asked for, how extensive or marginal the savings may be or materialize from a $300 million project. And then there's the danger of the design team would perhaps begin to reassign personnel and perhaps not be able to retrieve them in the future for our project, which is potentially 7,500 people. And the site really has already been mobilized for construction and would need to be, and by Skanska, and that staff would probably perhaps be reassigned too. It's ready to go. So if this is delayed, if the authorized work is delayed, that could affect their staffing as well. The deeper we go, or longer we go, the potential of cost escalation, industry talking, four to 5% perhaps of that. And we continue to operate the way we're operating at Northwest in very inefficient buildings, and you know what it all looks like out there with the scaffolding and such. And then also, the delay would then would result in certainly a delay in any bidding that would go out as it relates to the construction process itself and the advantage of that, doing that as early as possible. So that's, you know, in a general nature of some of the considerations, of consequences of the delay, and really a large part depends on how long, you know, that delay is.
So I would like to ask Mr. Bar to speak as to why he's opposed. So I would like to ask Mr. Bar to speak as to why he's opposed to the amended motion.
And I would like to say that Mr. Bar didn't have a chance to finish his motion and Carol, you may comment on that, but he was not through in his, his motion.
It's because it was amended and it took precedence by rules of order, Mr. President. It's, it's a right of a rule of order. It's, it's not anything personal. It's not trying to deny him the right to speak. He's going to speak right now. It's nothing personal. It's just a rule of order. It happens all the time.
Generally speaking, I would observe it as someone who's presided at hundreds of meetings, that person who has the floor is generally allowed to conclude their remarks before someone else makes another motion. Let me give a little background about where I'm coming from in the making the motion I did. This will take a couple of minutes, but I think it's important that our staff, our consultants, our students, and the general community understand what at least some of us on the board are concerned about. The purpose for this delay would be to allow for district staff and our consultants to get current, relevant information about new technologies and to present facts about them to the board as well as present other information about decisions related to the bond construction program. A lot of things are managed extremely well here at TCC, but I'm concerned about where we're headed on our construction projects. TCC has had problems in the past, we're all aware of, with construction projects, quality issues, design issues, some of them at the Northwest Campus. Example is poor quality buildings that are not worth repairing, but they're not that old, very dark hallways. At the Trinity River East Project, ridiculously high cost and design issues. Based on what I've heard during our previous board meetings, I know we have a lot of experience and common sense around this board table and members of the board are committed to being involved in the decisions that are being made about implementation of the bond construction program. Just for the record, I've been involved in voting to approve billions of dollars worth of, of public projects over the last decade or so. That includes a decade at the city where we did multimillion dollar expansions of, and renovation expansion of the convention center, at DFW Airport where we had a $2.6 billion airport expansion project, at NTTA where we built $4 billion worth of roads. I have never seen a board be asked to approve multimillion dollar contracts of this type and size or even larger without more information and significant board involvement in, in the decision-making process. Just before noon yesterday, the board was sent a link to a copy of a 371-page report about project planning and programming, programming for the Northwest Campus. I did receive that link earlier in the week, but the rest of the board got it at noon yesterday. I spent a good bit of time studying the report. It's got a lot of details, but that report was dated October 2nd, 2019, more than a year ago, and it has never been shared with the board until today. Lots of people were interviewed in the process, but for some reason, no more, no board members were interviewed or included in that process. With regard to the recommendations in, in the report, in the end, we don't know who said, this is good work, let's go with it. But it certainly was not the board. Ms. Alanese made a comment a while ago or in her comments a while ago, talked about good, better, and best. Sounds reasonable to me. Nobody ever consulted the board about that. No recommendation has come to the board about the quality of the buildings using the lead standards of silver, for example. Another frustrating, frustrating example of how all this is being handled was a very long email board members were sent just before noon today. It had three documents attached. At a glance, it appears to have some good and relevant information, but I for one didn't get to study it because we received it just six hours before the board, board meeting. It's not very helpful when that's the way we're operating. There's somewhat of a lack of confidence in the process. Who's making the decisions? Does the board have confidence in the process? My answer is not yet. My gut feeling is that the board's input has not been considered important. Suggestions essentially have been brushed aside. No serious consideration has been given to ideas that the board has brought forward. Some of us want to know who has been contacted about the, about ideas we've suggested. Who made the contacts? What information was received? The main response we've received is that's not what we've planned. It just doesn't appear that there's been serious considerations of options that the board members think should be considered. Feedback we've received on, on some of the calls that have been made is along the lines of contact made, check that box, not for us, end of story. This isn't just about P O E lighting or insulated concrete form construction. The fact of the matter is the board has never been given the opportunity to weigh on, weigh in on major decisions. Frankly, I don't know who's actually making the big picture decisions, the actual people that are doing it. Are we buying the best state-of-the-art buildings possible? And how are they being future-proofed? A term I first heard in a meeting yesterday. How are they being future-proofed for changes that will come? Now, I appreciate what Dr. Giovanni and Ms. Alanese has, have said here in this meeting today. I look forward to us furthering this conversations, conversation. It sounds like we are moving in the right direction. This presentation we've received today with, is, is, to me, appears to be the type of stuff that has been missing from the board's consideration. It's a start. We now need some time to absorb this information, to ask questions, and to get more information. Bottom line, we need to stop the process until the board is fully briefed, until our ideas are given proper consideration, until we are educated about the major decisions. If that takes workshops and extra meetings, that's okay. I believe this board's prepared to do the work. If construction is delayed, that's okay as well. We're planning to spend several hundred million dollars just at Northwest, made necessary because of less than best decisions in the past. I don't want to go down that road again. A delay is not the end of the world. Doing it right is more important. If this process can't be completed by mid-December, then we can extend it if the board wants to at that time. But if we're on the wrong road, the sooner we stop and get on the right road, the better. Mr. President, that concludes the remarks that I wanted to make after I made my motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bar? Yes.
Diane Patrick, I'd like to ask Mr. Bar if you could repeat the motion that you made. I didn't hear the full motion before it was amended. I'd just like to hear what the original motion that you made was and its full content, please.
What I was trying to say was I move to delay consideration and approval of items 5D, 5E, and 5F on today's agenda until the December board meeting with the understanding that staff will gather information and provide briefings to the board on these items during the December work session.
May I offer one comment? Delay of the Jacobs contract, the Jacobs folks are the people that we need actively working to get the website up and also to help us answer any questions that, that continue to linger. And so you may, may want to have a discussion about whether that is delayed as well.
Didn't we, in our last meeting, approve a contract for Jacobs to run through the end of this, this year?
It was intended to be a bridge until we got this contract approved today.
I believe it was presented as continuing it through December 31st.
I'll, I'll have to have a conversation with staff about whether there's sufficient hours available under that contract.
That was my understanding.
Mr. Heed, I have one more observation.
Go ahead.
A lot of the conversation we're having now is because this board has said stop. And I think the message here is we want to do this right. We, we're talking about doing deals with some, or engaging contracts with some very good companies. I don't have a problem with the companies, but I have a problem with the way the process is being managed and the way the board's input is being sought and, and engaged into the process. And that's why I think we need a little bit more time to work on.
We have a motion and a second. We're talking, Carol, we need to consider the amended motion first?
The substitute motion to approve is what you would consider first.
I'm sorry?
The, the substitute motion by Mr. Green Hill to approve is what would be considered first.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item 5E, excuse me, 5D. All in favor, aye? And let me give your names, please. We're going to need to take a.
Bar, no.
Patrick, no.
Evans, no.
Ms. Ayala, no.
Mr. Heed, no.
Morrison, no.
Mr. Green Hill's motion does not carry. We'll now consider Mr. Bar's motion. All in favor, say aye individually.
Mr. Heed.
Yes.
Mr. Heed, we have not had an opportunity to discuss the components of the main motion. And I would like to have it clarify what 5D, 5E, and 5F are separately, please.
That, that's an excellent point. Let me, let me read them and then Ms. Alanese can cover them. 5D is consideration and approval of services with Huckabee, Inc. for architectural services for the redevelopment of Northwest Campus in an amount not to exceed $9,511,471. Item E is consideration and approval of a contract with Jacobs for district bond program, owner's representative contract in the amount of $26,270,795 from December 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2025. Item 5F is consideration approval of contract with Perkins &amp; Will for redevelopment design services on Southeast Campus in the amount of $2,182,654. Ms. Alanese?
Yes, so the, the first item related to Huckabee is the remainder of their design contract for the, for the design of the Northwest Campus. The Jacobs owner's representative contract, we, we provided you with an overview of, of that last week. It's intended to be the five-year agreement with them to provide owner's representative services for the program. And the last one is Perkins &amp; Will, and they're the architect that is assigned to Southeast. And they are very early in the process in terms of still doing programming and conceptual design work. And this would be the, the next iteration of our agreement with them, but certainly not taking it to, to design development or to construction drawings. This is much earlier phase.
Questions, discussion?
Yes, my question is, and I, why were those grouped together? And could you answer that first and then perhaps I might need to make a substitute
Mr. Bar?
Are you asking why I listed all three of those items?
Yes.
Essentially, I think we just need to stop the progress until the board gets the kind of information that we need to make good decisions. As board members, we've, we've got a limited role in all this and we have limited leverage. I started asking six months ago for more information, for schedule, for a game plan. We, we, we don't have that. We're told we'll get it in February, but we don't have any of that today. And I, I think we need to just stop. I realize there'll probably be a cost to that, but I think it's a mistake to build, buildings that we don't, aren't confident that we are on the path this board thinks we ought to be on. And, and I just think we need to just say, wait a minute, let's make sure we're on the right road. It's a little bit along the lines of, of if you're in a hole, you stop digging is the first thing you need to do is stop digging. If we're on the wrong road, then we need to stop and figure out what the right road And, and I think all, all three of these contracts relate to each other.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would make a separate, a substitute motion to sever those items and consider them individually.
Well, that's okay. We can do that. Okay.
Is there a second?
Michael Evans, I'll second it.
We have a motion, amended motion and a second to consider these items individually. So we'll go to item 5D, consideration approval of services with Huckabee, Inc. for architectural services for the redevelopment of Northwest Campus in an amount not to exceed $9,511,471. And that is Mr. Bar.
I'm sorry, what's your question?
Do you want your motion to apply to this specific one individually?
Well, I think you have a motion to handle them separately. If, if it'll help, I'll withdraw my motion.
No, no, we, we have a motion to consider each item individually and we're now considering item 5D.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
There any, any further discussions?
There is, Mr. Chairman. I need to know from staff, um, exactly where are we? What happens if we delay this motion today? I need to understand in my mind how far in the future they continue to work under their current contract or what happens if we say we delay this contract with Huckabee.
One month. Was the original motion.
But are they already under contract and are they still working or does this contract start tomorrow?
Yeah, hold, hold on, we're, Ms. Alanese is getting a clarification.
So we estimate that there are enough hours left on Huckabee's contract through the end of November, maybe the first week in December. And so it would definitely suspend their design work, waiting until the next meeting. I guess I should, should also add what, what the consequence of those kinds of delays are, are getting construction drawings to the construction firm and bidding out and getting to our guaranteed maximum price. And so just any delays tend to compound some of those other activities.
Well, I guess I have a more important question to me. And that is, will the delay to next board meeting allow staff to substantially answer the kinds of questions that Mr. Bar has imposed that gives the board confidence to take a vote to move forward? And let me just say that when you have the kinds of questions raised by a board member, it of course gives other, me pause to ask, what did I miss? And certainly we want to go forward together in the right way, but is it realistic that in the two weeks or three weeks between now and the meeting on the 10th, that staff will be able to substantially answer the questions that Mr. Bar has posed? And, and first I want to ask Mr. Bar that. I want to hear his view and I want to hear from staff's view.
My conclusion is. My conclusion is that the staff is moving in the right direction on providing the kind of information we want. I for one will commit that if we need to do a, a, a work session prior to our December 10th meeting or something like that, I'll commit to attend and participate. I suspect that most of the members of the board want to do this right with the least amount of disruption. If we need to move our regularly scheduled workshop up a week, we can do that. I, I, I think we're moving in the right direction. And I, I agree, we want to do it as quickly as, as possible.
Mr. President, this is Michael Evans. I too will, I will agree to that. If we need to move up our work session meeting to another date, I'll, I'll do that too. I, I, I think that what we're, what we're asking, Mr. President, is that when we receive said documents and we're talking about, you know, better, best and that kind of thing, that we can have a, a better, a better explanation as, as to what that is. I mean, so that we can see what those levels are ourselves. I mean, because as, as a board member, I want best. You know what I'm saying? But I have not had the opportunity to, to see what, what better looks like versus what best looks like. I want to be able to go back to my constituents and say, well, we chose best because, or if one of them, you know, happens to read this information, they say, well, why did you choose better rather than best? I mean, and, and I voted for, you know, almost a billion dollars to be spent. Why didn't you give me an A plus rather than A minus or B plus? I, I think those are, these are the kinds of things that we just want to be articulate at or when we're out there in the public sphere answering questions. I think another would, would be, for example, a design. I mean, it'll be good to see a, you know, what a model of a, a finished Northwest Campus is supposed to look like, rather than looking at the elephant a little bit at a time. I think an overview of a design, you know, of a, of a draft, draft one, draft two, draft three, would be something good for us to look at again. I think it has everything to do with us, with me, I can't speak for everybody, being able to address questions that would come directly from my constituents. Now, mind you, all eight thousand of them, you know, they may not be as interested in it, but you might have eight hundred who are or eighty who are. And they deserve, they deserve a full answer from their board member and, and I'm that guy. So I, I, I hear what Mr. Barr is saying. I hear him 100%. I, I don't think that, you know, any of the questions that he's raising or concerns that he's raising, just like, just like our friend, Mr. Greenhill said, it's not personal. I think you, you just don't want to be out in the public sphere not being able to give as close to complete answers as possible. So I'll, I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Further comment, questions? Ms. Ayala, Dr. Patrick?
Yeah, we need to hear from staff. Because my question is, how can the staff, can they? And how can they give the information that helps us get to the answers that Mr. Barr is asking? And my next question is, will they not need the help of these quota experts to help them provide us with that information?
And that, I think part of the concern is also to allow the board to take a look at the information that was sent to us today. Chancellor?
Yes, thank you.
Can I just ask a question? Mr. He?
The chancellor is speaking.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on, Mr. Greenhill.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, the internet is cutting off a lot.
So somebody in response to Dr. Morrison's inquiry. And we've heard some already a little bit in terms of answering the question, but, but I want to be sure we completely vet and given we have everyone here, the board, staff, or, or our partners, if you will. So we have an opportunity to completely vet specifically that guidance or input from the board, now if we can, related to specific questions, information, topics, as best as possible. Because as, as indicated, it's, it's somewhat of a tight timeline. But also we want to be sure that everyone has an opportunity to, all the board members have an opportunity certainly to offer what they would like to receive more clarification, information or qualification on. And the staff is certainly here to hear all that. So before we get away from this, I, I would hope that we have that opportunity to assure that, that all board members do weigh in in terms of specific questions, items, information, topics that they would like further information on or addressed the next time, if it's a work session or whatever it may be.
Mr. He, I have a suggestion. We might consider approving some dollar amount to continue item five D, the Huckabee contract, so they don't have to stop work. And I think we could probably do that, adjust the amount under this action item as listed on the agenda. And that might be three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars or something.
I think they're billing between a million and two a month right now. They have well over a hundred people working on, on this, and so it would.
I can, I'm willing to agree to a million dollars. If that would answer Dr. Morrison's issue.
Is that a motion?
Well, I don't know where we are.
Go ahead.
May I say something, Mr. President? I believe that with all due respect, Mr. Greenhill did have his hand up, so before we keep moving.
That's correct. Mr. Green?
Well, thank you. First of all, whenever we decide, this is the Tarrant County College Board and we work together. And I will support, like the rest of us, any decision that we make. And, and that's the way it is. And so I'm, I'm, I'm fully aware of what the decision is going to be and I'm going to follow it and, and, and support it. So notwithstanding some of the statements that have been made during the session, I want to make sure that that's just part of discussions in a board like ours. I think what I'm struggling with, Kenneth, is the specific, if there are specific questions on each item that Susan and the staff need to answer, I think in specific, what, what information that you want, I think make some general statements, which that's what in my view is, if you would give them on each or now or later, give them specific questions that they need to answer that would be helpful for all of us. That's just my question.
That, that's a good point, thank you. I think that's what the chancellor was, was asking.
Oh, okay, that's, I just want to emphasize that, okay.
Any other questions, discussion?
Thank you for letting me speak.
You bet, sorry, Bill. Mr. Barr?
Well, I don't know where we are on motions right now. So I would suggest that we can see if it works for the board that we approve the contract with Huckabee for up to a million dollars to be spent so they can continue work on this project with the understanding that when we get all our questions worked out here in the next few weeks, that we'll likely approve the rest of the contract.
Is there a second?
No, 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 not yet. Mr. President, with all due respect, I think that Susan said that they're billing at like 1.2. So before, before we actually have a motion, I think we need to agree upon what the dollar amount's going to be. If they're billing at 1.2 and, and that's a guesstimate, then I, I, I think that we should, with all due respect, make the recommendation of about 1.5. And that way they can continue to move on with their work and they won't, we won't be, with all due respect, pardon the verbiage, we won't be lowballing them. So let's give them a, a good amount so that their people can get paid and buy Christmas gifts for their kids. I just, I'm just kidding on that part. But, but in regard to the 1.5, I think that's important as a, as an amount.
I can support that.
All right. So the motion is we approve 1.5 million dollars for item five D. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Patrick, all in favor, aye, and we can go individually?
Aye.
Aye.
Patrick, aye.
Morrison, aye.
Evans, aye.
Barr, aye.
He, aye. Okay, let's move to item five E, consideration and approval of contract with Jacobs for District Bond Program Owner's Representative Contract in the amount of twenty six million dollars, twenty six million, two hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred ninety five dollars, which would start from what this says December 1st, 2020, then running through December 31st, 2025.
That's correct.
And that is correct per Ms. Alanese. Questions, discussion?
Do you have a suggestion at a dollar amount that would get us through the end of the year?
So, so they bill at a fixed rate? And I'm sorry, I didn't bring my phone up here to calculate, but there's sixty months and at twenty six million dollars, we, I don't know if Jean's got a.
Five hundred thousand would cover it, right?
I see everybody looking, working on their phones real quick. Is, is five hundred thousand dollars sufficient to get us, okay, through December?
Then I would make a motion to approve item five D, E, five E in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to carry work on through December 31st, 2020, 2020.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Teresa Ayala.
Second by Teresa Ayala, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Michael Evans, aye.
Greenhill.
Teresa Ayala, aye.
Patrick, aye.
Morrison?
He, aye.
Morrison, aye.
Any days? Motion carries, thank you. Consideration of item five F, consideration and approval of contract with Perkins &amp; Will for redevelopment design services on Southeast Campus in the amount of two million, one hundred eighty two thousand, six hundred and fifty four dollars.
So I don't know what their monthly billable rate is. I would say if you did a similar amount of five hundred thousand dollars, it, it would more than cover the, the period of time that we're talking about. And again, they're very preliminary in their work, doing a lot of that technical work that we, we talked about previously.
Mr. He, I make a motion to that effect.
I second that motion, Michael Evans.
We have a motion and a second by Dr. Evans, a motion by Mr. Barr, all in favor, aye?
Aye. Evans, aye.
Ayala, aye.
Morrison, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. He, before we do move on to five G, I would like to retouch again the opportunity to offer any counsel related to topics, questions, particular specifics of information that, that may be desired to, to, to hear of in the future while we're all here.
Dr. Jevanee, I requested a couple of months ago, it was after we started meeting here, because I remember here, I requested that we be given a list of the major decision points that our consultants are relying on and let the board have the opportunity to understand those, ask questions about them and ratify them. Things like the good, better, best is an example, or the silver lead thing. Let us have enough information that we can say, yeah, that makes sense, we're okay with it. We probably will be, and I think I said this at the time, we'll probably be okay. But there needs to be a process whereby the members of this board, who are ultimately responsible to the citizens of Tarrant County, that we have the opportunity to ratify the decisions that being, that are being made. So I, I, I think that list is something that staff can prepare. Certainly if board members have input for it, we ought to, we ought to get it to you. And I don't know that the, tonight is, off the top of our heads is the best way to do it. I, I really think it ought to start with Ms. Alanese and the, and the consultants outlining for us what the major decisions are so that we can, we can say, yeah, that makes sense, or why, why not go in this direction?
And I might add to that, we, we received some informative information today, just today. And some of us haven't even had a chance to look at that. And, and for us to come up with appropriate questions tonight, I think is, is premature. I, I think we, we need to have time to do that.
Mr. He, may I have a comment? So we're here now in 2020. And we know as a board, I believe, I know I am trying to make the best decision possible based on the best information that we have and my understanding of that. And I would surmise that over the past years, formal boards did that as well. And situations and circumstances being as they are, I, I don't operate out of fear that we won't make good decisions, rather out of a proactive approach to getting the answers that we need. So I have a suggestion that anytime a report is given to the board, like that information that was sent today, it's probably a good idea to have a little discourse about it. Because there are some high points in it, of course. And I certainly couldn't have read and studied three hundred, how many, over a hundred pages that was today. So I think that I said at a board meeting or so ago, we know that in the course of spending the eight hundred and twenty five million, we're going to need some longer board meetings or some additional meetings to come together as board, staff, partners to make sure we're moving forward together. And we're all committed to that. And I understand that, you know, this is a period of time where some people take off. But I think I heard the board saying, certainly I'm willing to make myself available to staff to get the understanding that I need to help us move forward. But one thing, I will not sit here and let y'all bash former boards. So I'm just telling you, it's not that I feel I didn't make the best vote I could have, it's that those other people who sat on those boards with me are not here to defend themselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. He, may I, Mr. He, I'm sorry, this is Teresa, I just wanted to make a comment, please?
Please, please do.
Okay, thank you. I, I just want to say that I, I really appreciate this board and the dialogue that we've had here today. I think it's valuable. I think it's important that we hear each other, that we talk and we dialogue, and I, I really appreciate it. I also want to thank each one of you for the comments that you made because we all want the best for our students, we want the best for the institution. And so we all have a responsibility, we have a responsibility to the students, to the taxpayers, constituents. I want to thank the staff for the efforts that they put in. There's been a lot of information that we've been getting. And I think that we all acknowledge that maybe a lot of this information has been coming in later. Maybe we put the timing, that we've, had we been a little bit more engaged at the beginning. I, I loved the presentation you talked about, how we've been very collaborative about this approach, looking at three goals and the eight principles. We've involved staff, we've involved leadership, we've involved students. I think that was all very important. One of the things that I just didn't see, that there was a lot, not a lot of involvement or engagement with the, with the board. And I think I just. or engagement with the, with the board, and I think, I just appreciate the fact that everyone's been open to engaging us because we have a very important role to play here. We're not trying to get in the weeds, at least I'm not. I just want to make an informed decision. So I just appreciate the, the efforts and I appreciate the dialogue that we have had here. I think it's been very good, and I think I would like to see it continue as well.
Thank you. Well said. So is there a suggested timeline for us to get questions and concerns into staff in time for you to respond before December 10th or a prior meeting?
So the sooner the better, and obviously before the Thanksgiving break. I mean, part of the challenge that, that staff has faced, as much the material you received today was in response to, to additional questions from, you know, Wednesday night and, or, I'm sorry, Wednesday morning, Tuesday night, Wednesday morning. So, I mean, we're, we're doing our best to turn it around and give it to you in a, in a reasonable amount of time with the, the question. So I would suggest if, the sooner the better, early next week, and then we can put together some thoughts about how we would structure either a special session or a work session around that.
Thank you. Maybe, maybe let, let me suggest that all the questions begin before the end of the day on Wednesday, and then you have all Thanksgiving week, no, I'm just kidding. But then you'll have a week to answer them. Obviously you've got Thanksgiving break or whenever it takes. And, and encourage everybody that has any questions to try to get them in this week if, if at all possible, tomorrow or Monday, the sooner the better, so the staff has the opportunity to compile the, the response, the answers.
And may I test one thing with you, whether we do it as a special meeting or, or as part of the work session, it sounds like what we've heard today is, while, while we've been providing sort of snippets of the design work over the course of the last nine months, obviously there are volumes of things behind that and we, it might be worthwhile to walk through some of that, that, that shows some of those details about what's, what's going on in those discussions and, and have the model here again so that we can have that conversation. I also heard the, the, the explanation of good, better, best, and, and the conversation I had with the consultants, I think the, the board would benefit from hearing about what that means and, and why we, why we landed there and, and what that means going forward. And then finally, the, the smart building discussion that we sort of touched on tonight, that it might be worthwhile to share with you a little bit about what's already incorporated and, and why we would call the new buildings smart buildings and additional things that we, we would be moving forward. Our intent had been to cover more of that in February, the technology, to give us a, a full amount of time to really provide the full picture on that. But those sound like sort of three, three areas that, that many members are asking to, to include.
Thank you. I, I'd like to just make an observation, and I, I firmly believe that everybody that's part of this meeting has in their, their ultimate goals to do what's best for Tarrant County College. And, and, and I think we're all working together to try to come to the, the best possible solution. So I appreciate all the work that the staff has done and all our consultants, and, and of course, the, the work that the board has done. So if there's no further comments or suggestions, questions, we'll move on to item G, which is consideration and approval of contract with Royer Commercial Interiors for the third floor corporate services renovation at the Hermacy Johnson Hadley Center of Excellence in the amount of 857,691.36. Ms. Allenese?
Yes, as, as discussed last week, this is a continuation of the previously approved project for those improvements for corporate solution service delivery, and this just covers the furniture acquisition.
Questions, discussion?
I move approval.
Mr. Barr, moves for approval. Second by?
Michael Evans.
Okay.
All in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye. Gwen Morrison.
Aye. Teresa Yala.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item H, consideration and approval of contract with Weatherproofing Services LLC for roof replacement for South Campus in the amount of 919,519. Ms. Allenese?
Yes, this is part of our decade-long, decade-long effort to replace and improve roofs across the district and what is planned in our capital program for this year.
Questions, discussion?
Move approval.
I move approval.
Second.
Yeah, Dr. Morrison moved for approval. A second by?
Evans. Michael Evans.
Dr. Evans. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item I, ratification of proposal of Texas Air Systems, Inc. for COVID-19 district-wide bipolar ionization additions in the amount of 128,150.
This is a continuation of the system modifications under the CARES Act to improve air quality and ventilation in spaces that are being occupied even while we've got diminished attendance on campuses.
Questions, discussion? Motion?
I move approval.
Dr. Patrick, move for approval. A second?
Second. Dr. Morrison?
Second, Dr. Morrison. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item J, authorization of contract addendum number two with ABM Texas General Services, Inc. to extend the duration of the enhanced COVID-19 services through spring slash summer 2021 and increase spending authority by 233,000.
Yes, this is our janitorial contractor and our second amendment that's allowed us to do enhanced cleaning and attention to classrooms that are being occupied during, during the current conditions, and it's funded under the CARES Act.
Questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I move approval. Gwen Morrison?
Second. Michael Evans.
Dr. Morrison, second by Dr. Evans. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item K, consideration and approval of contract with Air Balancing Company, Inc. for inspection and calibration services of, is that Fume or Fume, Hood, an exhaust fan district-wide in the amount of 239,633.75.
Yes, this is an annual exercise that's required to make sure that all of our labs are functioning properly and keep students and faculty safe. I was asked a good question by Ms. Yala about whether with the lack of usage of those labs at this point, is this necessary? And it's actually required by state code for us to continue to do it on this cycle.
Questions?
Thank you for that.
I'm sorry?
I said, thank you for the clarification.
Any questions? Discussion?
Move approval. Gwen Morrison?
By Dr. Morrison. Second by?
Evans.
Dr. Ms. Allen, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Monthly, we're moving on to item six, monthly financial report.
You skipped the last one, 511?
I'm sorry?
I mean, 5L?
Oh, 5L. I'm sorry. I crossed it off by mistake. Item L, sorry, consideration and approval of resolution and participation agreement to authorize Tarrant County College District participation in the Hazlet Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number One and Appointment of Representatives. Ms. Allenese?
Yes, so you heard a briefing last week that this is participation in the Hazlet Ters, and it's, it's premised on improvements that they want to make to a Hazlet Parkway that is based on a loan from COG, and it's a repayment of that loan, and we are capped at our current projected 50% contribution of 3.4 million over that 20-year period or whenever the loan is repaid, whichever comes first. This also appoints me to their board to represent the college.
Questions, discussion? Entertainer motion?
I move.
By Dr. Mr. Greenhill, I believe. Second by?
Second. Michael Evans.
Second by, actually, Mr. Barr beat you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll go to item six, monthly financial report. I'm sorry?
Do we need to appoint somebody? Do we need to appoint, we need to appoint somebody at this point, Susan?
The appointee is included in, in part three of the, of the recommendation. Yeah, so it appoints me to the board.
Okay.
Well, we didn't know that.
I've got a few of them.
Point of order.
Motion carries. Moving down to item six with the monthly financial report.
Yes, so again, early in the year, and so you can see routine operations with our income at, at 15% of our projection. As you've been aware, enrollment is slightly down, and so revenue associated with it is slightly down. And we, we continue to manage expenditures effectively. Next month, it'll actually be a more interesting financial report because you'll, we're having an audit and finance committee meeting the first week in December to cover the external audit, and it'll be presented to the board in their work session to be received at their board meeting, and we'll have more information about the dollars that are being returned to fund balance as of last year with some of the savings that's been incurred. And so that'll be a more detailed report for next month.
Okay. And item B is review of the investment portfolio?
Yes, and so, let's see, we, our pools decreased by 1.5 million at this point in the year. We, we tend to spend more than we're, we're taking in, just based on the time of year and anticipation of tax receipts after the first of the year. Our yield is at just under 0.7, and our weighted average of maturity is at 230 days. We do intend to meet, in fact, it's scheduled next week with our financial advisor, just now that we're getting a little bit more clarity on cash flow associated with our bond proceeds that we have in our possession, and it's pooled for investment purposes to, to determine if there's an opportunity to buy some more of those one and two-year investments that we normally, that we normally keep. Quite frankly, the, the returns on, on what we're able to invest on are pretty low at this point, but, but we'll be visiting with them to see if there's any adjustments that need to be made.
Thank you. Item seven, Chancellor's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Heed. In reference to the monthly financial, next month you'll receive a report detailing both enrollment and financial aid process or progress this, this year, where we were, been in the summer, fall, and what we are looking at in terms of spring. And so that'll also help give some more clarity as to where the institution stands related to enrollment and, and revenue as well as financial aid dispersments. I just have one item I'd like to, to mention, and it's significant, one, that yesterday the college held its very first virtual all-employee meeting in response in large part to our faculty and staff and the need and desire to, to connect. And we did take the time to celebrate employee milestones such as anniversaries and, and retirements, and really just to give an appreciation, acknowledgement and, and the giving of thanks for all, all the work that our, that our folks do. Over 1,600 people logged in. So that was pretty significant, telling that really desire to connect and want to be engaged with each other, and immediately received a lot of, a lot of accolades to the event itself. So we're very pleased. We're also extremely fortunate to have Shala Richards join us again. He had spoken at, and did a presentation at the Chancellor's Breakfast in 2019, a renowned author and speaker, and did a, gave a great message, inspirational message around empathy at this time and, and the care that we should be giving to each other. So, thank you, Mr. Heed.
That was an excellent meeting. I think everybody that was, that participated really enjoyed it, and the presentation that, that he made was just outstanding, as he did the first time. Recent activities? You're through? Okay.
Mr. Heed?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Gwen Morrison. I have a couple of requests for future agenda items.
Yes, ma'am.
Number one, I would like to have, at the next meeting, a plan for TCC to take a formal look at the report of the City of Fort Worth Race and Culture Task Force and to explore how TCC is doing on those parameters and how we can use their report to improve what our life here at TCC for students, faculty, staff, and the community. Then, that's the first request. The second request is, I would like for, you know, when I was growing up, we used to see, I think it was Ronald Reagan on GE Hour, he said, people are most important product. And I would like to ask the chancellor and his staff to take a very close look and bring something to us in December of looking at employee considerations. I, I just know that that's important. And chancellor, I know you're planning to do it. At some point, I would like to ask you to do your very best to bring us something for December, please.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. And I would add to that, that we have frequently requested items related to success points and, and measurements of, of how this college is doing, and we certainly would hope that, that those items would be included in our monthly meetings. There being no further business, we are adjourned.
Mr. Mr. Heed, was I clear enough on that last statement? Does everybody understand what I'm asking for? I don't want to lead a meeting without it being clear.
We were going to turn.
Chancellor, did you understand?
We've had previous discussions, but we'll, we'll follow up with you, Dr. Morrison, to ensure specifically, we've had a couple of discussions, as you know.
Yes.
Related to this. And so we have some activity going on in the college now, and we'll be able to share, you know, that effort or that intent, if you will, of where we're going. So we will reach out to you to, to ensure that, that the, that the item gets fully addressed and, and maybe in part in December, I don't know, we'll, we'll chat and see what, how we might move forward with it.
Thank you so very much.
We appreciate your engagement and your input, as always. We wish you a happy Thanksgiving, everybody. We are adjourned.